Ms. Padaki.
President.
Ms. Strass.
Here.
Mr. Esslebladder.
Yes.
Ms. Hollingworth.
Here.
Mr. Knuckles.
Yes, here.
Mr. Ritter.
Here.
Ms. Sadek.
Here.
President Brookeett.
Vice President Hoagrill.
Here.
The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God in the middle of the great history.
Public notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act has been given by the Superintendent of Schools in the following manner. On January 8th, 2025, notice of this meeting was posted on the interior of the school administration offices 95 Grove Street Haddonfield. Written notice was submitted and filed to Haddonfield Barrow Clerk and notice was emailed to the Carrier Post and the retrospect newspaper.
Okay, items for board information, do we have any student commendations? Presentations, Curriculum Committee, you have a report?
Yeah, I can give a quick update, we just met yesterday and had a great conversation. We had a couple of guest speakers, so Tammy shared some updates on New Jersey Virtual School. We talked a little bit about some of the different program options and her and her team's assessment of how those work. There will be a student survey, as the programs are incorporated, a student survey will be sent out to help evaluate students' perceptions. Overall, we are very enthusiastic about adopting that program in addition, I guess, to our, to the existing version. With more options for the students. Thank you, thank you. Then Tammy and Rob gave an overview of two new semester courses that are being offered to replace some existing offerings. So, as always, our administrative team and our curriculum specialists spend a ton of time and energy evaluating what's being offered, how many, you know, who's adopting the courses and whether courses need to flex or change. And they've been working pertaining, I think, to commercial art to kind of revamp what was a four-year course to be able to essentially put it into different semester versions so that there will be more adoption, more value for the students involved. Dr. Blair joined us as well and gave us some special ed curriculum updates. She talked a lot about the programming within our special ed division that adapts to meet the needs of specific students and their needs, their goals, and their IEP objectives, always focused on evidence-based programming. And again, the importance of kind of evaluating the programs that are out there. She spoke a lot about a central repository online for teachers who are working with kids who have different, different needs to be able to access that. And also spoke a bit about the importance of collaboration, that we're in a district where a teacher working with a student can find others even in other school buildings who have experience working with a particular program or can share their learnings, what worked well, which program might be most beneficial for a student. So that's wonderful to hear. And she also pointed out that for many kids, numerous programs and interventions are used, there's not a one-size-fits-all approach. We, in evaluating that, one of the follow-ups, I think, Gino, was to get additional documentation around the various programs used and look at some kind of cost documentation ROI detail, and I think Dr. Blair will join us or sometime soon, maybe in the next meeting, to elaborate on those. Then, we had a lot of guests, then we had Matt, who came to talk about some new textbook recommendations. Chemistry open source textbooks, the fundamentals of anatomy and physiology for an AP course and AP bio, starting this fall. And then Gino shared an update, which was just good news, that our CUSAC submissions were submitted early. And so we're already beginning to get some valid and useful feedback on the many, many curriculum maps that we've submitted. So, any questions?
Virtual courses, is that somebody does at home or there's a classroom here that virtual classes?
Virtual high school would be an option too, so I've done that. The difference is, there's different, so the difference of, so you can take it, but there's, there are some levels, you pay more X, you actually have a New Jersey certified teacher who can give you individualized instruction rather than just a self-guided course. And what it came down to was, we were going to move that option and then realized, maybe, we had the families decide which option they wanted to use. We were going to mandate it for an extra $90. So if you have a child who can take, manage personal finance on their own, you sign up, they say, you know, my kid might need some help on this, you can buy the the plus, the plus option, I don't know what it's called, and then it would be, you would be a New Jersey certified teacher who you could then tap into.
That's great, so providing additional options beyond our standard offerings.
I would say that the, it's a tricky, it's a tricky, and Rob and Tammy are doing, doing as well, it's a tricky thing with electives these days, right? Because the flavor of the month changes very quickly. And the challenge is, teachers might have a passion and want to teach X, that doesn't mean kids want to learn X, right? So, so this is a good example, a course that was put together with this brilliant design, and the kids are like, I don't want to do that, I want to be just part of that. So, they took a course that had three major components, and the one component, none of the kids were drawn to. They get two semesters with more focus on those two things, and what, it's kind of, you know, when you're an elective teacher, kids vote with their feet, right? And so they voted, we don't like this, they went somewhere else, and so now they missed it, and they came back and they said, okay, we can focus on the two things that kids really like. Now, the flexibility there is, three years from now, it might be different, so then you've got to, you've got to be agile. And I think in the, we're talking about the one, we're looking at a senior course for English, we're talking about, we're going to make it so, it'll be a semester study of X type of literature, but knowing that literature can flex based on who takes the course every year, right? So it might not be always this literature, or this literature might be, so there's a, there's a nice balance of listening to the kids, and, because they're the ones who are taking the course. Because once you let teachers pick their passion, courses, it's great being a teacher, when there's three kids in a room, it's not, it's not that great for your school. So let's pinch out by those, by those people.
All right, Greg.
You got it, it was funny.
Policy?
All right, to use Gino's words, this is a policy dump, the first policy dump that we had. So I'll be as concise as possible, policy 5111, which had to do with those resident, non-resident students, we tabled that until at least February, we need some clarification from the state, and maybe, maybe you need a special seminar coming up, so nothing further on that policy, there's time more to come. Apparently, what Gino said, a lot of districts have many, many questions about this policy. So, all the details are out there, if you want to take a look at it for yourself, and I'm sure you'll have just another question, we did. So, moving on from that, next one was policy 5512, HIV revision, this is a mandated policy. And essentially, the major change in this first reading was, it's been revised ad information, that includes parental notification requirements and procedural guidance on the school district must stay slash pause an HIV investigation to a law enforcement, to include some investigation, we do this now, anyway. So, but this is mandated, and we move forward with that one. Next one was policy 5533, student smoking has been revised, report the use procedure of electronic smoking devices to law enforcement when school officials reasonably suspect the device contains a controlled dangerous substance or cannabis, that's also a mandated policy. And then policy 7441, which is electronic surveillance in school buildings, essentially what this states, it's a memory of understanding that, that law enforcement can access live streaming in certain circumstances, they would have to notify Mr. Faust in that case, which essentially, this is already happening, it'd be happening now anyway. But, but that's essentially what that policy regards, and that is also a mandated policy. Finally, policy 9320, cooperation with law enforcement agencies, there's revision to this policy, allows superintendent or designated to designate a law enforcement unit for the district, also addresses a handle of care program, and talks about, you know, defines marijuana and cannabis as non-controlled substance, but still triggers the district's responsibility to notify law enforcement if the student is under the influence or possession. That is also a mandated policy, all of these were first readings, by the way. Did I miss anything, Gino?
You did not.
Welcome back.
Okay, that's nice. I made you sweat a little bit, all right, thank you for your patience.
So one, one big thing that came out of that was the question was asked, because there's no smoking policy, you know, about signs. And someone asked, we have signs, I said, of course you do, and some of them walk by, they're white, they're passing, and had, had no signs, I found out. So we are now having no, not just no smoking, but no smoking or vaping signs put up, and so we're having all the signs you made, so in the next month or two, it'll be up all over the building. Nice and signs you can actually read, if you walk out today, tonight, and turn out at the sign, I challenge you to.
Okay, any other questions? Long range facilities plan, we have a meeting coming next week, so I'm thinking no report on that, and any PTA updates?
I have some from middle school, of course, I just lost it now. So, a couple of things that, one, I think I had mentioned this before, that they were looking to see about adding basketball nets out back. I think maybe send it more in an email with some questions even to like, get more details on that. But of some of the things that the middle school wanted to maybe see if they could help or add, they wanted to wait and see, A, if their referendum had passed, I think this was something we had discussed in the fall meeting. But then, any of these outdoors, I think the other thing was a, like a welcome sign on the side, does it need to wait until plans for any kind of construction might happen? Or can they go ahead and do that, so that, I'm going to get some more information and I'll send an email out about that. But just wanted to know that that's something that's been discussed, and that also, they're looking to replace the water fountain bottle filler for the kids in the gym area. I'm checking in on that, and I will also say, I know that they have at least two events coming up, one is, I think, the eighth grade ski trip, and then also a full school event, that's ice skating over at the Cooper River Ice Rink, so. TANP TTA has a couple of things coming up as well. On Sunday, January 26th, they're going to be holding a family holding party. And on Tuesday, February 4th, we're going to have our annual multicultural night at 5:30. This is when TANP families come in and they choose representative that represents a, their culture or a country, and it's a really beautiful night, there's a bunch of nonas and abuelas who come with home, a home book of food. And, starting last year, we have, we're going to have performances at the end of the night too, that's a really nice thing to see. We actually had a spontaneous performance where a TANP student was inspired by what he saw and asked his mom to go on stage and do a dance with him. So, they guys took Dominican music, and it was just so wonderful to witness the smile on his face, and it's just a really, really lovely evening, so.
It was a really nice event, I remember.
Tuesday, February 4th, starts at 5:30, we'll probably do something like the last 45 minutes of performances. So, it's open to the community, anyone is welcome to join, I encourage you to.
I'll apologize or something about that.
It was really great.
Everyone's aware.
Yeah.
You did a great job last year, thank you.
And K too, right?
Okay, Assistant Superintendent.
Send those questions about the building along, because we'll give it to the architect, but I, we met with Jerry, we're actually moving the playground work being done, had to, to the very last thing, that gives the PTA more time to raise money for stuff. So we get, there are things we can move around based on, based on that type of stuff.
So what would you, like, would you want, like, the PTAs to supply us with, like, kind of pretty, like, a little bit detail of exactly what they would be looking to do and where? Yeah.
And the architects say, that's not going to affect us any way, shape, or form.
Okay.
Go now, they say, we're going to be tearing that up, hold off on it, but an example, like the playgrounds, we're certainly playgrounds, the elementary schools, PTAs are raising money for new equipment, new equipment is very expensive, they're like, the longer you can put it off, the more time we have to raise money, and it won't, it doesn't affect any other product construction, we can do that, so those are the things we can, the architects can tell us whether or not.
Okay, fantastic.
Sorry, I thought.
No, no, appreciate that.
Assistant Superintendent. Two, two items, one, Meg alluded to the, our CUSAC review, and as a result of our early submission, we were able to get some feedback on some of our work. And we are now in the process of making some of those revisions based on the feedback. As a result of that, the board will note that we're going to add an agenda item next week to have those revisions approved, which is required to be considered, so we can resubmit that item without any penalty. And I'll give you the example of what most of the feedback is, it's, you know, when we're talking about curriculum standards in all of our pre-K to 12 classes, we're talking about literally thousands of standards, or hundreds of standards, maybe thousands. And some of the feedback is, well, in grade seven, science, I don't see standard 8.42C. And in 90% of those cases, that particular item is just in a different location where the reviewer didn't know it. There were a couple instances where we're missing a substandard of something, or we're able to very easily make those, easily. Supervisors have done a great job working on this. We'll have those revisions to the board on Monday, and we'll need to have those approved on, for next week's agenda. or hundreds of standards, maybe thousands. Um, and some of the feedback is, well, in grade seven, science, uh, I don't see standard 8.42C. And in 90% of those cases, that particular item is just in a different location where the reviewer didn't know. There were a couple instances where we're missing a substandard of something, or we're able to very easily make those, uh, easily. Supervisors have done a great job working on this. Uh, we'll have those revisions to the board on Monday and we'll need to have those approved on, uh, for next week's agenda. So it's not appearing here, uh, but you'll get a concise document with all of the updates that we're required to make. Uh, and next, at the next finance committee, we're going to be, uh, talking about the topic of, uh, summer enrichment. This will be the first summer that this is not a funded initiative, uh, something I've been telegraphing for the past two to three years.
Escher funded.
Yeah.
You said, you just said funded, but escher funded. It was always funded by escher funds.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that escher money has, uh, dried up. So we're going to be talking with the finance committee about what options we have. Aside from the fiscal challenge that we have with that, uh, the next thing will be building space, uh, a building to run it. Now, not to confuse this with the extended school year program, which is a, uh, a mandated program that will run, uh, over the summer. We're talking about the enrichment class, which was the Taylor Swift class, the arts and music class. Um, so if we're able to clear the hurdle of allocation, which is a substantial hurdle, the next thing will be, it's an unbudgeted expense. It would have to be a pay to play program. Um, you know, I'm looking at preliminary numbers at a low of $75 to a high of $175 for, uh, that would be a tuition to parents. And then the final hurdle will be, well, if we find a location, if we think paying is a good idea, should we be in the business of summer, summer, running summer classes? So a few hurdles to go through. So we'll be having that discussion in the next finance committee.
Thanks, Gino. And huge congrats to Gino and team, all of the zillion people involved in getting our CUSAC submissions in.
Well, I appreciate the accolade. Let's hold on till again.
Yeah, it's true.
In, in June.
I know it's gonna be good.
It is a cost, it is a big deal. The fact that you start efficient, and when you started working with, six weeks before we got the communication out from the county. So if you didn't do that, we're submitting at the deadline, we're not getting that feedback prior, then all of a sudden, we're scrambling, Jan, February 4th, trying to get this in, otherwise we're losing points. So it is a big deal. Well done.
Yeah.
I mean, he tried to play it down.
I know. Too modest. Uh, superintendent's report?
Um, just, just the, um, what the, as you can imagine, um, we've been, we've been working a lot on the referendum. We have an LRP meeting next week, we'll give more details. But, um, a lot of the planning of timing is falling into place. Uh, as we've met with building principals, we've met with bond counsel, we've met with, uh, financial advisors. We're getting all those things lined up. Um, we have some, there's some exciting stuff. I'm going to tease this to make sure next week, because we have some exciting stuff coming up that we'll be reporting out. Um, but there, there are some challenges we're going to face, you know? And so we're beginning to see some of those come to fruition as we head, look at this great plan, all of a sudden, oh. But the thing is, some of the challenges we're looking at are 2027, right? That's how, that's, that's the type of work we're going in there. So we are going to have, by next week, we'll be able to tell you with 94% assurance, what's going to happen this summer. Right? So we'll be able to know what we're keeping on the summer, um, with, what's going to be some of the things that are going to be finishing quicker than we had hoped. Some of the things are going to be a little more delayed. Um, and we have meetings up, probably set up by Tuesday, that's going to, for, for the, with us and the architects, it's going to really clarify, clarify some of the points.
That's exciting.
So that's, that's the biggest thing. And then we've gotten good news from the bond council. The numbers are coming back in our favor, right? So that's, that's what we're hoping for. So we're not getting any negative surprises there. So, right, so far, um, three, four, four weeks into this, we're going really well. Four weeks of our, of our five years, like the first four weeks are starting off really, really good. Uh, and the other thing that we're looking at too, I've been working with Paula, is we, communications of what we're doing is crucial. And so right now, we're giving information about when we're going to offer, offer, offer issue debt. Really, that's really easy. Once we are doing stuff, by we, I mean the architects and construction people, we need to show that. And so Paula and I started going through just, just Googling, um, schools are doing bond referendums and what they're doing. Everything from just a picture here and there to some text to actually, uh, the time lapse photos of them, of them putting down a floor.
Wow.
Um, so we're going to try exploring that, the efforts that's going to take. And then we'll talk about next week, when we move out, we'll be about, about the new page on the website, which is going to say, here's what it looks like, here's what we're doing. So we're doing as much effort in how to communicate what we're doing as in what we're doing.
That's true, yeah.
And that, that's.
So tune in next week.
And I have to say, like, there were some really great examples, right, that we had seen at the, um, um, conference, the workshop of some schools in the state, that the websites and the communication, but even the events, it was like community events that they were having, like, having the, the community be a part of the building, which is really cool. Yeah.
Things, things like, well, we'll, we'll have some ground, we'll have great experiences and ground. But the, some of the newer ones were, we saw this there, um, they'll do this at Haddon and Tatum, um, where they're putting up the last beam for the, for the new steel, all the kids, the teacher will sign it, not go up there. So we'll start doing things like that too, to get that, that to listen to as well. There's, there's one, if you're bored, Seneca High School in Illinois, they built a new gym. Go look at that website. I'm telling you, we're not going to do what they did. Go look at that website, because you can see every, maybe like time lapse of like six months of the thing going up.
Wow.
It's very cool.
It's a high.
It is a lot. Maybe don't go look at it. I'll give you a game with the one there.
Is there, I don't want to bring up the fence, but is there any update on when they're going to knock the building down?
Uh, we met, we were, um, no.
Other than, uh, what I heard is that it is, I don't have a date, but it is moving along.
So the hazard, the hazard material is coming out and my understanding is the demolition is going to happen more closely to the finishing of that than it was going to before.
That's my understanding as well. That's what I was hoping. So, yeah.
All right, good news there too. May I ask another, um, quick question that I should have just asked Mike about? Um, ages ago, we were talking about the crosswalk in front of the high school. And I know we had some level of commitment from the county to help.
Wait, that one, that's, that's, went in Labor Day weekend, right?
Is that the extent of it? Is that the extent of it? Are you, are you making, making jokes? All right, I'm like, I live on the street. I, I was like, I saw new cones, but they go away at the weekend. So hopefully for something.
Yeah, are you, if you're, there's no update, the last that we communicated with the borough. And again, it is, it's county responsible to get the work done. Totally understood. But, um, there's no new update on progress towards that being completed. The last communication was just that the extraordinary cost of work was over 200 grand. Actually, they said that the county received back a bid for it. Um, so there, there is no new update on it.
Still on the radar, but.
100% on the radar.
Linda totally threw me with that.
Sorry.
I just walked there.
No, I was hoping to give you an update on it, but there, there's no.
Yeah, it's just, it's such a mess. I just, I.
Especially this time. I mean, this time of year, I mean, seven o'clock pitch blackout. Seven, for our, the R meetings this time.
Five o'clock at the end.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, all the kids walking home from sports and. Okay, thank you.
Um, just for the, the board president's report, um, today there was an article that came out that it seems like, um, full day mandated kindergarten might be back in the, the legislature for, for.
Good thing we got ahead of that.
I mean, I, I asked Mr. Klospe as in more details, but when I read it, I felt, thank goodness, knowing that it took two years to get to this place, um, it feels pretty good to have a solid plan in place. Because, you know, I, I think that all, whenever it does come through, we just need to be, have a plan. So we've got a plan.
I don't know the details yet. I know that I've gotten calls from several news outlets. You want to talk to the one, one of the schools named, it doesn't. By N D dot com, and I have people like, yeah, we got to talk to you about this. Um, Inquirer wants to come in and visit one of our kindergartens to see what it looks like to have a half day kindergarten. So that's interesting. Um, but the other part of it too, if you look at the articles, it's, it's fully kindergarten and a plan for inclusive, for a full pre-K. Um, what a plan means, I don't know. Same like me, you might just have to have a plan. You don't have to, you can see a plan. You just have to have a plan. Um, so we'll, we'll wait to see what that looks like. Uh, I'm actually surprised they're mandating it because there's so few schools left. Um, but I think it'd be hard pressed to put a plan in for full day pre-K unless you mandate K first, or the math, or the logic behind that. So I'll, I'll be watching closely. Um, I got an email, I'm normally burning from the Inquirer, saying, you must have a crystal ball. I'm just putting this out. I did have a crystal ball, but I was just, you know. So, um, so I'll, I'll be watching that closely and let everyone know.
Okay, this is, uh, our, our work session. And we did say that work sessions would be the sessions that if there were topics for board discussions and committee of the whole, did I skip that? It's just what happens when I take my classes off.
There you go.
All right. Okay, no, no.
No, it's that one.
Yeah.
Discussion, okay, discussion.
Yeah, yeah. And you crossed it out because we don't have anything. But I just wanted to, to remind the board that we did say that this would be, these are the meetings where if there was something that we wanted to discuss as a committee of the whole. So, you know, new year and let's be mindful of that. And if there are topics that are emerging, that these are the, the meetings where we want to happen. Um, public comment, I am not going to read Jamie's wonderful and eloquent statement because I don't, do either of you have, want to make a public comment? This, this is the time to make public. Seeing that there's no one in the audience, I will, I will assume that we don't have public.
No non-administrators.
No non-administrators in, in. Um, okay, so now we'll just do a, a review of the 12325 agenda. Um, items for board of education approval, governance. This will just, I'll just stop and see if anybody has any comments on each of the topics. Curriculum and special education.
Just the one comment on the J, especially the programs. I know that we had, we discussed this in curriculum, that we agree, the greatest more information. So that, that's great sheet to update about costs and that type of thing. So, um, and, and some details in that. And also reassuring that some of those, many of those programs are used by General Ed too. They're just, that's a comprehensive, they're the specialized uses. That doesn't, they, they bridge both and, and we, we are mindful of that. So we buy, based on that. We don't have, we don't have the special ed buying Quizlet and General Ed. We repackage that. So that's all been, that is all big data. So we'll get more detail on that right after this week.
Personnel. Approval of the following business and financial recommendations.
There's a couple of plugs I have to give you guys. So Chuck had mentioned, working with bond counsel on working towards the bond sale to get the, to receive the bond proceeds for referendum construction. I just received the, that resolution this afternoon. I didn't see it, when they're putting it on there so late, because it's a 30-page resolution. So I didn't want, you guys, I think you had to read that before tonight. So that'll be on the agenda for next week, but you'll have, you'll get the link to the agenda tomorrow. That'll be added for next week. Uh, also added, uh, to next week, there'll be, there are a couple of RFPs that we opened this week for the referendum architect and construction manager. Those recommendations should be on next week's agenda as well. Not for next week, but for next month, we also have the fiscal year 2024 audit that was completed and filed with the state this week. Uh, that will be on the agenda, the agenda for February. And then our auditor will be here at the 13th board meeting to give the financial summary from the fiscal year 2024.
Just as one that, on the bond council and finance advisory meeting, I felt Mike's growth a little bit. When he sits in educational meetings, he's like, I don't think you should fire off 400, you pay like, he's, I mean, I'm going to lose a costly, sitting here for two hours talking about interest rates and this and that. I was like, I'm going to cut out of myself. So I'm sure, I'm sure that people find it very.
It's actually a strategy because I never want you in the meeting.
I'm guessing as long as Mike understands.
I was doing one of those things that they do in my old police car. I can't hear breaking up. It was, uh, it was, it was, um, I'm going to go with interesting.
Other than.
Mike found it interesting. So I'm going to go with yes, yes. They were, they were fascinating.
I have a question on C. Um, I feel like we addressed this before, but I'm kind of forgetting the details, the, the purchase of the lift. Are we investing in that because like long-term usage?
Yes. Um, we actually floated this by the finance committee back in December. Um, that is obviously for a lot of reasons.
Blessing.
Um, I'll start with the funding source. It's actually being, uh, purchased through an equipment pool that we have with our custodial management, uh, company. So that's actually not affecting our general fund budget at all. That's a simple way to, to, we've already spent that money. Um, secondly, we, all the rationale to purchase it, number one, safety. Uh, number two, we have this referendum coming up, can be very useful to us in certain aspects for a variety of reasons, especially getting access for a professional, perhaps like our architect that may need to go and review. Instead of pulling a worker off of the, one of the, the contractor's list, when they need to go work, we'll use our own lift so they can continue to work and, and, uh, let the architect review, work is already been done, things like that. Um, so for a, a lot of reasons. And again, safety, most importantly, for, for our staff to use. Um, that's the biggest rationale for going for the lift.
And things like even for the cleaning gutters on the, on this building, we had to, we had to borrow a truck from the borough. We can't get that. So they, we'll be able to clean the gutters. Things like changing lights in gyms, stuff like that are really challenging. So this, and banners, so it, it.
Yes.
Yeah. We rent them a couple times a year.
Yeah, right, to do those things. But what's also fascinating about these lifts, we, we call them spider lifts. They're show compact, they can fit through a single normal size doorway. And this lift reaches up to six, 60 feet.
That's impressive.
Yeah. Which will.
No.
Gutters, perfect example. The highest, uh, root, root for gutter that we would need to access is actually the rear of a wing. It's al- almost 60 feet. It can, it can, uh, they can, we can access it.
My house is going to be a problem.
That's like trying to kill an ant with bazooka.
Putting up Christmas lights.
That's right. You got a line, they'll be.
Yeah.
Um, I have a question on E. Uh, I thought that we had previously painted it.
Yes. Uh, so, so Misi is, uh, received his doctor from Marshall University. So as part of their program, they require the dissertation to be a minimum of, I think it was six credit hours. So when he initially registered for his final dissertation semester, he registered for, uh, what he thought was a felony requirement of two semester hours. The university scheduled his dissertation. They allowed him to defend his dissertation and, but did not issue his dissertation because he has not met the, uh, financial obligation for the six credits which are required. So as a result, he had to pay for additional credit hours. Um, upon his payment and completion of that, uh, he will submit a reimbursement once we confer that that payment has been made.
And this, and this is contractual, right? The, the administrative pool gets a pool of money, a tuition reimbursement. Each person, each individual is limited at 5,000. But, um, and, and if everyone did it, then the pool would run out of money. But as long as there's money in the pool, contractually, this falls under what we.
Yeah, okay. I just saw it before and I.
Right, I said the way.
We're paying the same thing twice. Okay. And congratulations, Tim.
Yeah. And also a nightmare. I should be graduating. Oh, just kidding.
Yeah, yeah.
It's stressful. Okay, um, anything else there? And then approval of minutes?
Items for, for future consideration from the board? Okay, and can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting? I guess.